Okay, we'll call this meeting to order for each right with pledge allegiance and the indication following. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all the citizens. Amen.
Amen. Rule call, please.
Allen, here. Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Mr. Avich, Ryan Dowd?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse councillor Mr. Avich due to being out of town. Don't move.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion on that? Be or not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes for the city council meeting on April 5th. Is there a motion? I like motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Be or not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Uh, is any audience comments on any non-agenda items? No?
None.
Thank you. Okay, we move on. Mr. City Manager, any change in the agenda?
No changes.
City council, any change in the agenda? Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Was been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on items for consideration, which we have seven this evening. The first one is presentation of city volunteer of the year. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to present the city Richmond Volunteer of the Year Award to the district for discussion at the quarterly roundtable. Due to COVID-19, we have waited to present this until we could do it in person. Three years ago, the city was contacted by the family of Doug Penzine who wanted to create a memorial award in Doug's memory. And we worked with the family to create the Volunteer of the Year that is given annually in honor of Doug Penzine.
Any concern council, is there a motion?
I don't think there is.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is no need for a motion. Gregor? Step right up to the microphone. You are the Volunteer of the Year for 2020. COVID, it's a little late, but we wanted to make sure, council wanted to make sure that you came here publicly and saw, uh, you know, and make sure that the public saw that we appreciate the fact that you are the 2020 Volunteer of the Year.
Oh, thank you.
So, just a minute. Just a minute. You know, let people know who you are out there in TV land. Uh, and also that this is given in honor and in memory of Doug Penzine who volunteered in so many ways over the years and the family has graciously bestowed this plaque for many, many years. We have many blanks in here. And there's two previous, Dr. Patrick McClellan for his service to the community and Tom Habley in 19 for his service to the community and Keith, your name's already on there. So, but tell you a little bit about Keith. He is a longtime member of the Richmond Lions Club. I believe you're serving as president right now? I thought you were, yeah. How many times we won't go there?
Yeah.
Um, he puts together and sends out the Lions Club's newsletter, assists with their highway cleanups, and has always participated in the Richmond Recreation Department's Chili Cook-Off. Actually, one of the biggest cheerleaders we ever had for that. Did you ever win that?
Yes.
I thought you did. Okay. But he's done many things with the Lions Club that go beyond the norm. Uh, Keith also has a long history of involvement as a board member of the Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce and was instrumental in putting together the elected officials forum that brought together business community with elected and appointed officials from the surrounding area. He always has taken photos of Lions Club, Chamber of Commerce events, and many other events throughout the years. Uh, but we use them here in the city of Richmond and the news media has used your pictures over the years also. Keith was also at the forefront for the establishment of the Richmond Girls Fast Pitch Association. Um, I served with Keith. I know what he did to bring that to one of the finest programs in the state of Michigan. And actually, we were recognized nationally by the National ASA, A- SS, no, American softball, so ASA, and recognized the program as one of the leading programs in the country. Uh, Keith was definitely, there I was as a secretary treasurer. He hooked me into coming into the thing in the first place because I had a daughter a year younger his old, but he, he made what it is still today and has always supported the program, which because of his efforts and his knowledge, especially his computer knowledge back in the day when none of us knew what the computers were, he was putting newsletters together. He was, the K&amp;M tournament was one of Keith's big finds also. Um, he made, he directed the first year, but he did all the work beforehand. It was, it was, nobody had seen tournaments like that. They'd never seen the magazine that he put out with all the team names and all the individuals. He's just always done way beyond, I think, the norm. And, um, this isn't the grand marshal plaque of the good old days, but it will be someday. You and your wife both deserve that. But this, unlike, or not unlike Doug Penzine, Doug was involved in so many different things for so many different years and, and it's just right for you to get the Volunteer of the Year Award for 2020, Keith. So, thank you so much on behalf of the city council and the people of Richmond, and this will be on permanent display. Don't put it on the wall.
That's my thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, I'd just like to say I'd like to thank the city council, I mean, the city, the townships around us, and, and all the volunteers that we have in this community are just tremendous. I, you don't have to, you know, once they step up, you know, they just take over. So, thank, thank you all and I really appreciate it.
Again, thank you. Thanks for coming up. I know you gave up golf tonight to do this.
Actually, I did. Hold up there. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number two, which is consideration of special event request Heritage Festival by the Richmond Historical Society. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Area Historical and Geological Society to hold a second annual Heritage Festival scheduled for Saturday, June 26th to Sunday, June 29th from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. both days. Uh, last year, unfortunately, they were not able to hold the festival due to COVID, uh, but they did want to bring it back this year. Um, the big addition this year is in addition to the tractors, uh, they're reaching out to a lot of the pre-World War II car clubs that are out there, the V8s, M8s, those types of automobiles, and are hoping to draw them as well as the tractors. If they do, that will change then the, a little bit of the road shutdown. Last year, they shut down Park Street between Stone and BB. This year, depending, if they do get a lot of the cars, we'll also close down BB Street similar to the closure that we use for the community garage sale. So, people will still be able to get around it by utilizing Monroe and I believe Washington. Um, and there's a map in, in your background brief. Don Graham has been putting this together. Um, I was hoping he'd be here tonight, but I'm not sure if he made it. Um, but again, it's very similar to the one that they ran two years ago.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rag special event request for the Richmond Historical Heritage Festival in conjunction with the Log Cabin Day on Saturday, June 26th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Sunday, June 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. along with closures of Park Street from Stone to BB Street and BB Street to Pool Drive to Festival Drive for both days.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion on this? I sit on this committee. I was asked to sit on this to maybe kind of liaise on with the city and also because of Little Bay's experience. And, um, I want, you know, to say what a wonderful job that Don Graham is doing. He's very, very thorough on everything. I am the committee. He has everybody delegated out and everybody's responsible for certain facets of the festival that he's having. I think this could be a, a very good year for them. Hopefully, the COVID allows him to have, uh, you know, open air, uh, events and, um, that he can pull this off with COVID. Um, he, he does plan on having, uh, safe, uh, plans for COVID as far as keeping people as far away from each other as possible within the guidelines set by the, uh, the health department. So, um, I think they've done a very good job and this should be a good event for our community. Matter of fact, he had meetings today at 10 o'clock. He's meeting often to make sure that this thing is happening correctly. Any other discussion? I don't believe there's any audience.
Eric.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of approving Biotech Agronomics proposal for sludge hauling. Mr. City Manager?
The Wastewater Crew Plant operations create a waste product called sludge. Uh, when conditions allow, a portion of the sludge is sent to the geo bags designed to dewater the sludge for future disposal at the landfill, but the rest of the sludge is sent to a storage tank for land application as liquid sludge. Uh, working with Tetra Tech, we did receive two quotes for the land application with the low bidder being Biotech Agronomics. And Jim Gatzinger, our public service director, is here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jim, did you have anything to add to that at all before council votes, or makes a motion? I'm sorry.
No, I mean, this is a new contractor, but this is not in the process. So, it's kind of, it's standard practice of the Wastewater Plant.
Thank you. Is there a motion, council?
I'll make a motion to approve and enter into the agreement with Biotech Agronomics for sludge disposal and authorize the public service director to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion?
Do you need dollar amount in the motion, not being as an American?
Uh, yeah, you could, you could.
Assess it. And, um, Biotech Agronomics, 28,450 to the motion.
Sorry. Okay. Support Jimmy?
Yes.
I'll give mine. Okay. Um, that would be my first question now. Is that, what is that number based on, Jim?
Uh, that's, that's based on an estimated 500,000 gallons, which is, which is an average.
Yeah, but that's what I, that's what I meant to ask. That is an average? So, it couldn't go above this?
Correct, but the numbers have been pretty consistent over the years.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, if you'll, I mean, if we had more sludge than 500,000, the motion includes?
Yeah, or, or it could be in, uh...
Possibly.
Uh, based on an average of 500,000, the 28,000, yeah.
Yeah.
450, if you want to phrase it that way.
I just don't want council to have to, you have to turn this back to council, you know, in the future. So, just if you mind adding that language, based on 500,000?
Yeah, based on 500,000 for the 28,000 part.
Good. Jimmy, okay? Very good. Okay. Any other discussion? Be or not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is consideration of DTE proposal for Diane Lane. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider a proposal from DTE to install streetlights on Diane Lane. Uh, these will be similar to the lights that are going to be installed in the West Richmond subdivision that we recently approved and those on Woodside Drive in the surrounding subs. Uh, we've had this in our budget for the last couple of years. Um, and finally, uh, we have a new, um, community lighting rep that was able to get this processed and back to us. Um, the, you will have two motions. One is for the approval of the installation of lights and the switching out of one existing Cobra light that used to be it when Diane Lane was a dead-end street. Uh, there was a Cobra at the, at the far end. Um, and when they extended Diane Lane, they left it there. So, this will take that Cobra and also bring it down to match the rest of the streetlights. Um, so, uh, again, the number I put in the budget was just an estimate, so we will need to amend the, amend the budget. So, the total cost is $12,592.
Thank you. Is there a motion to amend the fiscal year?
I'll make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, general fund, capital improvement, contractual services line item from $10,000 to $12,592.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Is there no audience?
None.
Okay, thank you. So, motion's been, uh, made and supported. Uh, any other discussion? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have the second motion to approve the proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from DTE in the amount of $12,591.48 to install the lane on Diane Lane and authorize the city manager to sign any necessary after.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion on this item?
It's nice to see you. Go ahead, buddy. Much needed.
Yeah, very, very dark.
All men and all.
And, uh, it was, I don't know, there was an oversight when the street was built and all those homes were built. Uh, it should have been a requirement back then, and I think we're fixing something that's needed to fix for many, many years. But as John said, it was very difficult, uh, to get the ball rolling with DTE over the years. And I think we finally made a, really made a stat out of it a few years ago, and we, we finally are going to get it done. Thank God, you know, there's so many more people that are going to be living than walking, uh, through that neighborhood with the new subdivision back there, and it's, uh, timings, timings right now, uh, to get this done. So, that's, I'm glad to see that administration followed through on this and that DTE got somebody in there that is responding to the request of the city final. Any other discussion? Be or not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of approving letter of recommendation from the city manager recommending not seeking competitive bids for 68420 Main Street. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider approving a recommendation letter from the city manager recommending the waiving of the competitive bid process for 68420 Main Street. Uh, the property family referred to as the old gas station on Main Street or Eric's filling station, uh, had several names over the years. Uh, we purchased this quite a few years ago through TIPA. Um, we've taken the building down, uh, cleaned, cleaned up the property, and, uh, we've discussed it, uh, several times with city council, uh, including most recently to have our engineers do the survey work necessary to split the property, uh, to go to the adjoining, uh, property owners, uh, certainly one, uh, the, kind of the house to the north on Main Street. Um, certainly, this will help kind of solidify the, uh, statewide value there with, with bringing it into having a yard kind of similar to other houses in that neighborhood. And, uh, by attaching a portion to the financial business there on the, I think it's buyer, uh, um, it'll allow them to have a better parking area, uh, for their business and, and better signage. So, it certainly, by splitting it and attaching it to those two properties, makes those two properties more stable. Uh, so, with that, that's my recommendation to waive the competitive bidding process.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the city charter and ordinance 64 dash 41 for the sale of 68420 Main Street due to no competitive advantage based on written recommendation from the city manager.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Discussion on this item? We've had a lot of discussion over the years. Um, when we probably got the property cleaned up and, and, uh, taken care of, it's, uh, and then both those property owners requested purchase, uh, it only makes sense to, to, uh, do that, especially with the house. Uh, that property went back behind their house and it was just a very strange piece of property. How it ever got like that with the house built there is hard to believe, but, uh, as the city manager said, it gives them a normal lot with a backyard that is actually theirs and not the adjoining properties. Uh, with the other piece, that would be Mr. Madel, um, with his, uh, business there, certainly, uh, as noted, it gives them space for parking. Otherwise, they've been parking on the street. And, um, as a planning commission member, we worked diligently a number of years ago to put a, uh, gas station in there, and I believe we were only allowed two islands, period. Uh, it just wasn't feasible. You couldn't, you couldn't pump enough gas through there to, to, uh, make it worthwhile. So, um, any other thing that could have been put in there had been very, very difficult. The only thing the planning commission said was you could possibly put an office in there. We have plenty of office space. It wasn't, it's not necessary. So, to me, it just makes the most sense. You know, we give it to the two adjoining properties, one for a residential, the other one for potential parking for his business, which he doesn't have now. So, I appreciate the administration following through on this. Any other discussion? Doesn't look like there's anybody in the audience.
No one in the audience.
Thank you. I believe our roll call should probably be done on this. Karen, will you please do a roll call for me?
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Mr. Avich's accent. Ryan Dowd?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Karen. Item number six is consideration of acceptance of council resignation letter. Mr. City Manager?
The city council is scheduled to consider accepting Dennis LaFleur's resignation letter from the city council to, in order to stay compliant with the city charter.
Thank you. I guess I hate to ask, but, but is there a motion, uh, to this effect?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation letter from city council member Dennis LaFleur.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. What do you say? Uh, you know, you're doing, well, let me give you the floor.
Um, I mean, it's, uh, it's not what I intended to do, but, uh, to allow my son to move forward in a job opportunity with the city. Unfortunately, the ordinance doesn't allow me to stay on with, uh, city council at this time. Um, so, for them to be able to offer him the, the job, um, I have to resign prior to that happening.
So, um, which is written in our charter in 1966 or whatever that was. And, um, you know, uh, City Manager, as I'm warning you, that this was kind of boilerplate language in a lot of the type of forms of government that we have. It's like falls under the nepotism rule. Um, it is, uh, administration has made it very clear that your son is absolutely the best candidate for this job. He has the most experience, uh, in this type of work, and, um, there's been no favoritism whatsoever. Uh, make that very clear to, uh, anybody who would think otherwise. The fact that you are allowing your son to, uh, to take this position, uh, when offered by the city, uh, is noble. You've been on the council for many, many years. Um, but you're not going to go very far because you're still on TIPA. You can still run in November. Uh, this is like a six, six-month, uh, uh, off time for you as far as the city council may be. You know, the election is wide open, as you well know, in November. We hope that you run again. You've been a great team player on this city council and, uh, you know, certainly wish you the best of luck, uh, in your future if you decide not to, uh, run for city council. Um, that is something that is coming up, uh, in July. Um, we have to make a decision for, council members have to make a decision whether or not they're going to run or not. Uh, I believe it's like the third week's out within 90 days. So, um, we appreciate certainly all your time, uh, on this council with us and, uh, appreciated, uh, your experience and your knowledge in, uh, helping us, uh, make decisions for the betterment of our community. You have to see you resign. Other comments?
I was very bittersweet. He's done amazing job in the council all this time, and fortunately, if you go off like this, kind of, not the way you want to do it, but like you said, he's doing it betterment for, for Brady and the family and totally understand and respect it.
Well, hopefully you'll, uh, associate me at the budget meetings, uh, in the audience part.
We hope so. We hope so. Any other comments, council? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, we thank you so much for your sacrifices. This takes us to item number seven, consideration of filling the council vacancy. Mr. City Manager?
Considered, council is scheduled to consider, uh, filling the vacancy created by, uh, councillor LaFleur's resignation. Um, should council, uh, accept that tonight, which you just did. Uh, the charter language is clear. You have, uh, 30 days, uh, to fill the vacancy. If you don't fill the vacancy within 30 days, you will, uh, trigger a special election. Uh, administration would just remind you that, uh, with the upcoming election in November in the new election laws, the special election, uh, should you not fill the vacancy would be scheduled for the August, uh, primary. They would then serve from August until November. So, uh, you know, certainly, uh, council's decision on how to fill the vacancy within the parameters of the charter and they leave it wide open on how you fill that seat. Um, it's completely up to the, to the council. Um, but our recommendation would be not to do the special election. That'd be about, close to $5,000 now, uh, to, to run a special. Uh, with the timing, uh, we would hope that you consider filling the vacancy.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Tim Schultz to fill the vacancy created by Dennis LaFleur's resignation.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Discussion? Uh, I feel so strongly about this. Um, Jim Schultz, as, as we all know, served on the city council for 16 years. 14 is Mira Pro Town. He is, uh, has the knowledge that we need, uh, for the interim. He does not plan on running in November. Um, he had, we have, uh, budget meeting starting next Monday. Um, if we were to go out and, and, uh, ask for people to, uh, fill out applications and whatnot, the timeline is going to take us, uh, halfway through the 30 days that we have, uh, that is given to us in the charter. Uh, Jim can come on board immediately. Um, he, you know, we know what we have there as far as Jim and his knowledge of the city of Richmond. I don't believe there's anybody more qualified in the city than Jim Schultz to fill a vacancy, period. I believe even he had showed the respect for the office of a councilman over his 16 years. And I believe it's what's best for our community is to have somebody right now who knows what's going on in our community and we do not have to teach. We have three budget meetings to plan for the entire year. And those are all going to be held within the next 30 days, I believe. So I believe very strongly that this is the way that we should go for the benefit of the community. Jim is willing to do this. In anticipation of Dennis's resignation, I went and talked to him last Saturday. And with a little coaxing, he said he would for the six months up until the election. So I'm happy that he has said that he would do it. And I just strongly, as I've already said, I strongly believe he is our best candidate. There's no reason to go out for applications. He would have put one in anyhow. Any other conversation?
No, I agree 100% of there. Sitting with, on council with, with Jim for many years, the knowledge and background and just the common sense of your brains at the table. It's a great one to fill in for Dennis's shoes and I won't miss a beat moving forward. No, I think that's a absolutely great, great addition here, fortunately by subtraction. But the way to fill Dennis's shoes, a place I've previously worked with Jimmy, I'm going to ask for another person.
Anybody else? If not, I don't see anybody in the audience.
No comments.
Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank Jim for stepping forward. And we would hope that he could be sworn in before next Monday so that.
Yes, yeah. About trying to get him up here and have a titty pair out so that we can just start with the budget meeting and go from there.
Great. Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager.
Speaking of the budget meeting, we're hoping to get your packet out this Wednesday. That's our goal. Thursday at the latest, but we anticipate that it'll go out. We're all working on it and have done, and we anticipate that it'll go out on Wednesday.
Okay. And moving on to council comments. Dennis, you are already resigned, so you can't say anything anymore. Jamie? I was going to start with you, Emily. You noticed you made all the motions tonight.
Emily?
Nothing.
John? Rob?
All right, just want to thank Dennis again for all his time and welcoming Jim aboard and forward to what's coming on.
I think there's probably going to be a lot of honeydew as well. He's got a little bit of time off. Okay. And I will give you what's going on here in our city. We have a budget workshop, as been mentioned, on the 26th at 5:30 right here at City Hall. We have a TIPA meeting at 7:00 on the 28th. And that is in person at City Hall?
Yes.
Okay. Are all of our boards now meeting in person?
We are all now meeting in person. They're often kind of the same setup that we have here.
Yeah.
But yes.
Okay, very good. So then two weeks from tonight will be May 3rd. And that's the budget workshop there also at 5:30. And then the regular city council meeting at 7:00. Now, the only thing I show on our calendar is Saturday, May 1st, as Richmond Little League opening day. Have we heard any different being?
I've not heard anything different, and I know they've been working towards getting the fields ready and stuff. So my understanding is unless.
I seen one this morning.
They are still shooting, okay.
Those shoot for May 1st.
All right. And have we been contacted about National Day of Peria?
I realized looking at the, tonight's agenda, that that would have normally been when we approved it.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to Reverend Egley. I know last year we had to do it Zoom.
Yes.
Certainly, we may not be able to do like pizza luncheon, but I'll, I'll contact him. We still have time of being the 3rd, but that'd be the Monday before the Thursday. So I will contact him and see. He has not contacted me.
Okay, very good. And that's, that's all we have on the calendar. Was there anybody else that had put anything on the calendar? Okay, and I have a couple of announcements. The American Red Cross lifeguard training will be held right here in Richmond for anybody who cares to be a lifeguard. Those classes will be June 5th, 6th, and 12th from 10:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. at the Richmond Community Pool. As we have said before, we've had a very hard time getting enough lifeguards to have our pool open. And we need people to come out and this would be a great thing to happen. You can contact Mitchell at 810-882-1363 for any questions you may have. And you can always call our Parks and Recreation Monday through Thursday at 7273064. And then Parks and Rec would like you to know on May 22nd at 9:00 a.m. in the Beatty Street Park gazebo, the perennial exchange will happen. There are some COVID-19 guidelines, of course. Again, any questions, you can call the Recreation Department at 7273064. As I'm looking at this, it says to call, I believe that's the library's number, 7272665.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not at the bottom of this, it says to call. So we got the wrong phone number on the flyer that you gave me.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, again, it's, it's run by our Parks and Recreation Department and you can call them at 7273064 and they will give you any information that you may need for the perennial exchange, which is a very popular event over at the park. There is no closed session. Is there any other business at the city council this evening? Be you not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn. Support.
It's been made and supported. There is no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you for being with us.